Clerk Seegres, can you please take roll call?
Borninsky.
Good evening.
Foster is not here. Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Seegres is in attendance. Slavens.
Good evening.
Anne Snideman.
I'm back.
Thank you. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 28, 2023?
So moved. The point.
By Clerk Seegres, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, the next item is public comment on agenda items only. I'm going to look, I'll do Kevin first. Second. Okay, we have with us a special guest star, Kevin, State Representative Kevin Coleman. He's going to give us an update on what's been happening in Lansing, and then Linda, you'll be next. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Thank you, Board of Trustees, Administration. I appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes to talk tonight. I'm Kevin Coleman, State Representative for the 25th House District, which is the majority of Westland, all of the city of Wayne, a little corner of Dearborn Heights, and then the south end of Canton Township. And that's new as of January. So with redistricting, I went from District 16 to District 25. I'm a former Westland City Council member, but I've been a state representative for the last five years and very proud to represent the Canton community now as well and look forward to working with you all for the betterment of our community. We've been very busy in Lansing the last couple of months, a lot of late Tuesday nights, so I apologize for not coming sooner, but I'm glad that I was able to make it tonight and I really appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes. I'm working hard with Rep. Purry. I know he represents the majority of Canton Township to represent Canton's values up in Lansing. We've been fighting very hard and we've accomplished a lot just in the last couple of months. A couple of things that we got done in the last, just the last few weeks. We repealed the retirement tax. I have a little list here. I'm gonna read it off because it's lengthy. We have cut taxes for working families. We've expanded LGBTQ civil rights, which I'm very proud of. We've restored workers' rights by repealing right to work, and that was last week. We've reinstated prevailing wage. We're gonna require universal background checks on all gun purchases in the state of Michigan. And then we've already invested more in infrastructure. So these are things that I think are important to all of us and I'm glad that we are checking those boxes early in the year, getting those things done, because we all have a very busy year in front of us and I'm glad that these values are, these goals are things that we're already taking care of early on in the year. I do have a meeting coming up with some of you this week, so I look forward to that. And I'm gonna give out my contact information because I'd like the community to be able to use our office as a resource, contact us with any questions, comments, feedback on legislation or ideas that you have. Our number in our office in Lansing is (517) 373-2275. Our email address is kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. And I always give out my cellphone number and that's for anybody, even people watching at home. Just try to call me during the day and, you know, not in the middle of the night or anything. Leave me a voicemail, I'll call you back. (734) 751-6321. Thanks again for having me. I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Steven?
Yeah, thanks for coming. Good to see you. And I actually, probably more for the supervisor, I'm assuming that you've been communicating, as you have with Rep. Purry, with Rep. Coleman about the projects, that we still, you know, need help with funding in the future?
Yes, we're meeting tomorrow, actually, on the-
That's the purpose of that?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. So looking forward to you getting a little educated on what we need here in Canton, so.
Likewise. Thank you.
Representative Coleman, in the previous legislative cycle, you introduced a bill that would allow for the notices to be done virtually for public notices. You intend on introducing similar legislation this year? And what do you, what do you think about the potential success of that legislation?
Glad you mentioned that. We do have a bill drafted already for public notice reform. Back when I was a council member in Westland, I saw kind of some of those issues coming forward, looking forward to the future and knowing that municipalities were gonna kind of have a hard time with, you know, working to get those notices in local papers and meeting the requirements of the public notice law in our state. It's been a little bit of a challenge. I've been working on it the last two terms. It's my third term now, looking at it again. I do plan on introducing it again, but any kind of support or encouragement you can send our way, we appreciate it.
It's a hearing and you need testimony in support of it? We would be more than happy to show up and-
Thank you.
Staff members or deputy supervisor, you have any questions? No? Well, thank you very much for coming. We look forward to talking tomorrow, more details about some of our projects.
Likewise. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Keep up the good work. Next, we have Linda Davis Kirksey. She's on our consent calendar, but she just wanted to kind of give a quick update to everybody about some of the grant writing that she's been doing. Linda?
Hi, good evening Supervisor and Board of Trustees and audience. I just wanted to say hello. I'm in, as we affectionately know, in my business is Grant Hell this week. We are doing a lot of appropriations requests. As supervisors really familiar with and working hand in hand to get letters of support for the requests that we have in. But a summary, I wanted to congratulate Canton Township. For this year, the submissions that we have had have been awarded in the amount of $1.1 million in support for grants for the township. That was for leisure services for Ridge Road Park, which was a federal appropriations last year. And also, we received EECB funding for energy efficiency, $145,000, that we're working on to determine what we're gonna use that funding for. We also have some pending grants in the amount of $200,000 through, through the Department of Justice for the Embedded Social Worker Program. And right now, this week, I'm working on submissions for you in a total amount for projects of $11.5 million that is going into federal appropriators this week. So I just wanted to take this time. I would have been there in person, but we're on these crazy deadlines of tomorrow and Thursday and Friday, so I'm trying to get everything done. But I want to thank you all for working with me this year. We, I have had such a joy working with departments on submissions and working together and getting to know the departments and their needs and, and trying to develop, you know, different avenues for us to approach funding. And I look forward to continue in the future. So I just wanted, I asked the supervisor if I could take this time just to address you and thank you for giving me a lot of joy this year. You're a wonderful community to work with. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Yes, we have three deadlines now. Senator Stabenow, Senator Peters, and Congresswoman Dingle, like within a week. So she's working feverishly with all the groups.
Yes. And you guys have been wonderful getting these letters of support phenomenally, turning this around. So I appreciate it very, very much.
All right, great. Thank you. Thanks, Linda. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Any public comment on agenda items only? I'll look at the attendees. Public comment on agenda items. Public comment on agenda items. Nothing online. Anybody in the audience? Public comment on agenda items only? Nope. Okay, great. Next item is the payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Snideman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, request for resolution of local body of government to recognize Canton Township Newcomers Club as a nonprofit in the community for purposes of making an application for a charitable gaming license to the Michigan Gaming Control Board. C2, consider approving the purchase of 9,000 feet of type K copper tubing, brass fittings, and stop boxes and rods from Core and Main. C3, consider approving the purchase of 114 water main repair clamps in various sizes from low bidder Core and Main in Canton. C4, consider award of a contract to suburban calcium chloride sales for the 2023 dust control program for local gravel roads. C5, consider approval of a purchase order for rental of tents, tables, and chairs for the 2023 Liberty Festival. C6, consider renewing a one-year contract for grant writing services with Davis Kirksey Associates Incorporated, Associates, Inc., and associated 2023 budget amendments. Interesting wording. And then item C7, consider reissuing a purchase order and an associated amendment to the 2023 E911 budget for dispatch furniture.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G1, consider awarding a contract to Rotundo Construction, Inc. for the sidewalk repair program for 2023 and 2024.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a contract with Rotundo Construction Incorporated for the 2023-2024 sidewalk repair program and authorized municipal services department to put the contracts in place and to approve the purchase orders of $1,335,088 and $939,000 in 2023 and 2024 respectively, for an amount not to exceed $2,274,088 to Rotundo Construction Incorporated for the two-year contract and schedule a 2023 sidewalk public hearing at the next Board of Trustees meeting, March 28, 2023. And finally, to approve the attached 2023 budget amendments.
Court.
Made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Trustee Snideman. Sorry, I just had to reboot here for a second. Okay, great. In February of 2023, Canton Township publicly bid the annual sidewalk repair program, which includes work in subdivisions on the primary roads, some limited sidewalk gaps, and incidental flatwork on township properties. Due to the amount of repair in the subdivisions, this was bid as a two-year project. Engineering Services received seven bids that were evaluated by a committee based on price, qualifications, experience, accountability, workplace safety, workplace development, social equity, and sustainability, including a work plan. Based on this evaluation, Rotundo Construction was selected for this work. Rotundo has a clear understanding of the expectations of the township in repairing replacements of sidewalks and ADA pedestrian facilities and has satisfied the criteria requirements of responsible contracting information. For these reasons, Engineering Services requests to award the contract for 2023 and 2024 construction years with a possible yearly extension for three additional years, 2025 through 2027. Additional awards may pay item and unit price adjustments. Upon completion of the project annually, Canton Township reserves the right to terminate or extend the contract with Rotundo for the following calendar years, project, based on their performance each year. The total bid amount for Zone 8 of the SWRP is $2,274,088 and will be completed over two years, 2023 and 2024. The funds approved by the Township Board for 2023 will not cover the cost to complete the work as true costs were not known at the time. A budget adjustment of $485,088 is requested, of which approximately 75% or $363,816 will be reimbursed from township property owners. Time is of the essence to start the program after Memorial Day and the sidewalk hearing will be set at the next Board of Trustees meeting. A second public hearing will be held in the fall for the work that will be done the second year. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
I don't. Other than that, we did have seven bidders on this, so we did go through the responsible contracting process with Mike Shepherd in the Finance Department. So this was the, probably the first one that we've had that many responses from as, after we've implemented that. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Tanya?
Yeah, I just had a comment. Thanks, Director Smith, for forwarding me, forwarding the board members, the, you know, the detail of how it was graded. It was good to see that we were using the responsible contracting guidelines and how, you know, we were fairly grading all the contractors and Rotundo really came out as, you know, above everyone else. So I am glad that we did that and I see that the process is working.
Anyone else? Steven?
Yeah, I agree. First of all, great that we're getting back in full force to repairing sidewalks. I think this is just one zone, eight, I think?
Yeah, and it's a big zone. That's why we had to split it up over two years.
Okay, yeah. All right, that's, that's good. And, and also really interested in what I saw in the responsible bid process and how it was scored and it just like was kind of cool seeing that all come together. And I really appreciate the detail that your staff and Director Trumbull's staff went through in order to evaluate those. So, thank you.
We will pass that on. Thank you.
Exciting that we're moving forward with the contracts and all the money we received from the state and we're gonna get a lot of sidewalks done. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks. Item G2, consider authorization of a purchase order to Manikin Smith Group for professional engineering services for the sidewalk, parking lot, and path pavement reconstruction at Victory Park.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order contract for the Victory Park construction projects to Manikin Smith Group Incorporated for $126,000 and to approve the following budget amendments.
Motion made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In September of 2022, Canton Township solicited bids to complete design and construction engineering services for sidewalk around kickers and parking lot pavement designed for Victory Park and path design and reconstruction around the softball fields. Only one bid was received from Beckett and Raider. However, they did not respond when contacted in November about completing this work. Since their bid was considered non-responsive, Canton Township Engineering Services solicited bid in January from Manikin Smith Group, who had previous experience at this facility. This proposal is acceptable and Engineering Services is requesting to enter into a contract and purchase order for the planned 2023 and 2024 pavement design work at Victory Park. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
Nothing else to add.
Questions from the board? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider authorization of a purchase order to Fishbeck for professional engineering services for the 24 major road improvement program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order contract for the 2024 Major Road Improvement Program construction projects to Fishbeck Incorporated in the amount of $437,430.
Support.
Made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Trustee Borninsky. On October 22, 2019, the Township Board authorized extension of the contract with Fishbeck Incorporated for engineering services on the major road projects after the successful first year. Subsequent years have been as equally successful with Fishbeck currently providing engineering services for the current and upcoming major roads projects. Presently, Engineering Services is requesting a purchase order for the 2024 Major Road Improvement Engineering and Design. Director Smith, do you want to add anything?
Nope, just getting prepared for next year.
Could you let us know? I mean, what roads would this cover?
Yes, this is gonna be Beck Road from Cherry Hill to US to Michigan Avenue and Geddes Road from Denton to Canton Center.
Questions?
I'm glad that the Beck Road from Cherry Hill to Michigan Avenue is being repaired because that has some major crater-sized potholes in there. And we are using, yeah, and we are using our road mileage for that.
Oh, do you know if the county's doing anything this year or what they're doing?
This year, they're doing Van Born down by the landfill. The, these projects in front of you tonight are for 2024's projects, for us to get those designed and ready to go. We have, we'll have no idea what the county's doing for 2024 until probably towards the end of this year.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, let me see. Oh, yes. Consider authorization of a purchase order to the Manikin Smith Group for professional engineering services for the Road Improvement Program Major Intersection Design.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order contract for the Road Improvement Program Major Intersection Design to the Manikin Smith Group Incorporated in the amount of $732,350.
Motion made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. As part of the ongoing effort to improve the road network within the township, Engineering Services, along with the Township Board, have identified four major intersections that need upgrades and improvements. On November 9, 2021, the Township Board awarded 30% design to the following intersections: Beck and Ford, Sheldon and Palmer, US 12 and Geddes and Sheldon, Ridge and Geddes and Salz. These preliminary engineering efforts were geared toward having a good understanding of alternatives, cost estimates, and potential right-of-way needs for these four intersections. From those reports, three of the intersections were selected for full design, numbers one through three, which is Beck and Ford, Sheldon and Palmer, US 12, Geddes and Sheldon. The fourth was put on hold due to Wayne County signal improvements at this intersection, which is Ridge and Geddes and Salz. The purpose of this RBA is to award to the Manikin Smith Group for Ford and Beck and Sheldon and Palmer intersections. Director Smith, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, just real quick. This is in response to the work session that we had about a month or so ago when we talked about all the intersections. We had Manikin Smith do the study and they did identify the three intersections. I know there's been a concern about, there was a lot of discussion that evening about what was gonna be done at each of those. So Beck and Ford is definitely on the list and we will concentrate and design it with the dedicated left-hand turn lanes. And then Sheldon and Palmer, we'll move forward with that one as the way it was designed. I know I had a conversation earlier, Madam Supervisor, that US 12 Geddes and Sheldon, that's not, actually not included in this because we're gonna go back to MDOT and work with them on that. So this design is only for those two because we know there's a lot more discussion to have on the US 12 Geddes and Sheldon. So I misspoke earlier when I spoke with you.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any questions?
So the study will be done this year and if we want to move ahead, then probably it will happen next year.
Yes, so the, the study's already been done, so these will be the designs?
Yeah, I mean, the design, yeah.
Yep, and then we'll work those design-ins to the road projects starting in 2024 and 2025. Yes. And by then, we'll have more discussion on the US 12 Geddes and Sheldon.
Yeah, so excited to see Beck and Ford on the list. It's been 10 years of begging and pleading, not with you guys, but with county and, and of course, the state for that one. And glad to hear that there's a turn signal because, I mean, I just can't imagine doing all that work and not ending up with a turn signal, so.
So we're gonna design it that way and then we'll have to go back before the state and the county to make sure that they agree with our design and move forward.
Okay, there's a lot of vocal citizens that we can get behind that, I know. Diane and I know a whole subdivision of them, so. So that's great. And the only other thing is I think number four should be Ridge, Denton, and Salz, right?
Right, it should be. I apologize for that.
It's not in the, the motion, so it doesn't really matter, but.
I apologize.
Thanks.
Excited that we're getting back into intersections. I know we did a big effort a decade ago and more to focus on intersections and, you know, when we passed the millage, the kind of main focus was the quality of the roads. But on top of that, traffic is probably the number one, you know, outside of quality traffic is a huge concern people have. And, you know, we have these, these old intersections that haven't really changed much in decades. And I guess the difference is our population's kind of doubled, so, you know, or tripled in some respect. Ding time.
The ones that we hear the most about from residents.
I'm also excited that we might get a rotary in Wayne County.
Great, we'll be the first one with the roundabout. We're in competition with Northville, by the way. They're saying they're gonna be the first ones in Wayne County, but we're gonna be the first ones. So it's on. Competition. All right, great. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider approval to purchase a field groomer for Canton Parks.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award the purchase of a laser-ready ballfield groomer, a one-half-ton roller, and a weight kit from US Golf Cars at 6881 Appling Farms Parkway in Memphis, Tennessee, 38133. In the total amount of $46,979 to be paid from the subject account number for capital, outlay, machinery, and equipment, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Trustee Borninsky. On January 26, 2023, Leisure Services staff advertised an invitation to bid for a laser-ready ballfield groomer. Of the two submissions, Canton Leisure Services is recommending the purchase of a laser-ready ballfield groomer with the additional, with the addition of a half-ton roller and weight kit from US Golf Cars for a total amount of $46,979. A budget amendment is necessary. John is on the line. John LaFever of Leisure Services. John, do you have anything to add?
Just that this is a key piece for our staff and says really more about the resources we have on hand who can handle the grading of our fields. It's essential to maintaining the quality of them, so we're looking forward to adding this to our fleet.
Thanks. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion, just keep, okay? Sorry.
To comment, I just wanted to thank John for discussing this one with me and answering my questions on it.
My pleasure.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6, consider creating and filling a Business Operations Coordinator fire position with an associated amendment to the 2023 fire budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation and filling of a Business Operations Coordinator fire position and to approve the attached amendment to the 2023 fire budget.
Motion made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Bless you. The Fire Department is requesting to a new position of Business Operations Coordinator fire be created and filled. The new job description and factor analysis of pay grade seven was approved at the Mayor Commission meeting held on November 9, 2022. In addition, an amendment to the 2023 fire budget is included with this request to accommodate this position being filled June 1, 2023. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
I'll be happy to answer any questions. This is just part of the succession plan that we spoke about when we filled that manager's position.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider approving a three-month extension to the Michigan Humane Society contract for animal sheltering.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order with, for an amount not to exceed $20,000 to extend animal sheltering services with Michigan Humane Society while a new contract is negotiated.
Motion made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Police Department is requesting to extend its current agreement with the Michigan Humane Society for animal sheltering. This extension will allow for services to be provided to the community while the department negotiates its next contract with MHS, which will be brought to the board at that time. A purchase order in the not-to-exceed amount of $20,000 is being requested for this interim period. Director Bowden, do you want to add anything?
Yes, this will help us in the interim as we, we found the new terms that are out there potentially for us will change our standard and our service level for our citizens. So we're trying to find the best way to resolve it in the interim. So we're, we're exhausting some resources. Talked to the deputy supervisor today and we're working with Foster Swift right now with some of the issues that may arise and the liabilities that could be incurred with some of the animals that could be injured under our watch.
Questions or comments from the board? Kate?
Yeah, just wanted to thank Chief Bow for the conversation earlier and the questions I had on this one and a couple of others.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G8, consider approving a 2023 police budget amendment for recruiting efforts.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve increase in 2023 police budget as listed below to be utilized for recruiting efforts.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegres, supported by Trustee Borninsky. The Police Department is requesting to increase their budget for recruiting efforts from $1,500 to $21,500 for the year 2023. These funds will be utilized with oversight by the Director of Police Services and in compliance with the township's purchasing policy. Director Bowden, do you want to add anything to that?
It's a challenging market. If we spoke about- We spoke about multiple times. We're looking at some more aggressive approaches, which will include the Supervisor's Office in understanding how to advertise under, within concert with the township messaging, so we're working through it. We just talked to an advertising firm today, and we're excited about one of the opportunities there.
Comments?
So Director Baud, so these funds will be mainly used for advertising, or are you doing like, you know, I don't know, I'm sure you do participate in job fairs and things like that.
That's correct. We do many, many job fairs, and I'll give you a little anecdotal evidence. Just at the local police academy, I believe there's fifty-eight police officers, applicants, candidates that are in the academy. Ten are available for hire, and they have twenty-eight agencies that are trying to hire those eleven people. So it's quite competitive, so I appreciate your consideration.
I look forward to hearing about your creative recruiting efforts.
Yeah, me too.
Putting this on TikTok?
We're looking for volunteers.
TikTok is going away, Instagram. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, consider renewing the license plate reader annual subscription.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the renewal of Vigilant Solutions License Plate Reader Annual Subscription through Vigilant Solutions LLC in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Police Department is requesting to renew its annual subscription for its license plate reader system through Vigilant Solutions LLC in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Director Baud, do you want to add anything?
I know over the last month or so, we've elaborated the point a little bit on how we use the license plate reader, but I'll be happy to answer any questions. But this allows us to have access to the system. This is not adding any fixed positions, and it allows us to replace if we needed to cameras within the mobile unit in the car.
Questions or comments? Kate?
Yeah, I had talked to Chief Baud about this this afternoon, and I noted in the background information for the board that it said that new hardware was part of this. And so when we talked, it, my impression was that this was to, to fix the cameras that we currently have that are broken.
Two things going on at the same time. The cameras that are in the car had some issues as we spoke about at the town hall, and we're awaiting the new vehicle to put them in because if we put them in the current vehicle, I think its lifespan's about over, if I'm not mistaken. So it might be a waste of money to put them into a car we got to take them out of.
Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G ten, consider approving purchase of four election ballot drop boxes.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the purchasing policy and approve the purchase of four secure ballot drop boxes from American Security Cabinets for not more or for no more than twelve thousand dollars, and to amend the budget as attached.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Clerk's Department is responsible for providing a secure ballot drop box per every fifteen thousand registered voters. Secure drop boxes shall be distributed equitably throughout the municipality and should be accessible twenty-four hours per day during the forty days prior to an election until eight PM on the election day. Canton is unlikely to have an election in two thousand twenty-three, therefore the overtime budget can be reduced to accommodate the increased expenditure. While the state of Michigan is providing for base-level drop boxes for all municipalities, they are prioritizing jurisdictions that have elections in the two thousand twenty-three first. In factoring in supply chain availability, readiness for the February two thousand twenty-four presidential preference primary, and brand consistency, the Clerk's Office recommends purchasing directly from the manufacturer and pursuing a reimbursement if available. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add to that?
Nope. Unless there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, just, do you have an idea where they are going to go? Are you working on that plan now?
Well, we've got some, we've got our partners in municipal services over there helping, helping us kind of come up with that. If you remember, I had sent out a document to all of the board with our proposal, twenty-two two implementation strategy, and in your board packet, you will see a map on page two hundred and seventy-three that shows a star where each of the proposed ballot drop boxes would go. One is intended to go to Copper Park, which would service residents on the east side of the township. These are people who, residents who are probably the furthest away from Township Hall on our current ballot drop box. Additionally, there's a large proportion of residents in this area of the township that lack access to a vehicle, and so it's super convenient for them from an equity standpoint. We are also in talks with the Medina Center at the corner of Hagerty and Palmer Road, which is another east-side location that could benefit from having a drop box there. We would keep the drop box here at the Township Hall, probably would be moved based on the because we're going to be redoing our parking lot. So I imagine it won't be in the same current location that it is. Adding one at the summit, and then finally adding one in Cherry Hill Village near the Village Theater. And the map there shows the vote-by-mail rate, kind of trying to balance two really important things here, which is the density of, or three, the density of registered voters, the density specifically of voters who choose to vote by mail, and then also factoring in an equity component there of access for voters who, who might lack the ability to travel long distances to return their ballot. One cool caveat is that there's now return postage on all absentee ballots, so people could very easily just walk to their mailbox if they want to.
Oh, you're right.
But we are conveniently going to put these in places as best as we can.
Great information, thanks.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, you know, we are planning to have these boxes in different sections of the community, especially on the, you know, we also considered the equity factor in there, and we are having some on the northeast side of Canton where it's probably the farthest from our, you know, our Clerk's Office or our current box. So I think it's a great idea, and I am supporting this.
Kate?
So these are now required by law, so I commend you for getting ahead of this and, you know, making sure that we are all set before, you know, we run into a supply chain issue or something where we can't comply with the law, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that. One, trustee Ganguili did mention to me probably two years ago, maybe three, that she would like to see a drop box in this area of the township. So I thought about that when I picked this location, that was banks there. But then, two, to your point, thank you very much, yeah. Potentially, there's some concerns, right? I mean, thousands of ballot drop boxes are going to be bought for, in Michigan, and there's only a few qualified vendors who make them to standards that are, they're going to meet that legal standard. And so our kind of goal is to not wait with everybody else, but to kind of move ahead with the same consistent one we have here at the township. And I think there's, there's some wisdom there. We can absorb this in our existing budget, so I think, I think that's a good spot. So thank you, trustee Berninski, for that. Very kind.
Anyone else?
All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eleven, consideration of first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter two, Article five, Section two, two forty, and Section two, two forty-four of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance amending Chapter two, Article five, Section two, twenty-two, two forty, equal opportunity and non-favoritism, and to table for consideration the proposed ordinance amendment to a schedule, a second reading on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Board is being asked to consider an amendment to sections of Chapter two, Article five of the Canton Code of Ordinances, specifically Sections two, two forty, and two, two forty-four. This amendment will change a section in Canton's Ethics Ordinance referring, referencing the anti-nepotism policy, creating a new section referencing Canton's equal opportunity and non-favoritism policy. Director, I'm sorry, supervisor, okay, Joseph, Deputy Supervisor, I'll say your name first. Do you have anything to add?
Just that in updating the township's anti-nepotism policy, our Township Attorney at Foster Swift recommended this amendment to the Ethics Ordinance. This amendment simply references the new policy, which, if the Board chooses to pass this amendment to the current Ethics Ordinance, the Supervisor's Office could consider in revising the anti-nepotism policy. One thing I want to add about the motion is it looks like the model resolution is only moving to introduce the first reading of the amendment to Chapter two, Article five, Section two, two four zero. We should also add Section two, two four four as being amended as well in that motion. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Questions or comments?
Make a friendly amendment?
Yeah, let's, that makes perfect sense. The language in the, in the title is accurate, right? It just didn't make its way into there. So I would accept that friendly amendment.
Two-two-four oh and two-two-four four.
That's the model resolution because it's in, it's correct in the title, but not the resolution. So we're going to say two-two-four oh and two-two-four four.
Yep. Questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Did you read both motions?
I read both resolutions as one, as my form of protest to how we write RBAs.
Great. Item G twelve, consideration of first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter fifty, Parks and Recreation, Article one, titled Department of Leisure Services of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce for a first reading an ordinance amending Chapter fifty, Article two, Department of Leisure Services, and table for a second reading the same ordinance on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Board is being asked to consider an amendment to various sections of Chapter fifty, Article two of the Canton Code of Ordinances, entitled Department of Leisure Services. They will change the title and provisions of the ordinance to reflect the reorganization that will be occurring within the Leisure Services Department. Deputy Supervisor Haver, do you want to add anything?
Just that Canton has Leisure Services Ordinance, and in order to facilitate the reorganization that's taking place within Leisure Services, to add the Community Development Division, this amendment to Canton's Leisure Services Ordinance is necessary. Most of the amendments to the ordinance are simply adding the language referencing the new Community Development Division within Leisure Services. However, there's also an addition to the ordinance that assigns economic development and DDA responsibilities to the Leisure Services Department as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. I think I know there's a lot of hard work. That was a long ordinance. Item G thirteen, consider Merit Commission recommendation for reclassifying Deputy Leisure Services Director position and new position of ED and DDA manager.
Heck of a budget adjustment. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the Merit Commission recommendation to reclassify the position of Deputy Leisure Services Director, grade ten, the position of Community Development Director, grade thirteen, and to approve the Merit Commission recommendation to create the Economic Development and Downtown Development Authority Manager position, grade ten, and the associated budget adjustments.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Canton Leisure Services Department is expanding, adding to the array of services presently provided. The department is being enlarged to include community development in order to create a more focused approach on resident services, businesses, and economic growth within the township. The new department will consist of two divisions, Canton Leisure Services and Community Development. The restructure of the department requires a series of changes that include the reclassification of the Deputy Leisure Services Director position and classification and approval of the Economic Development and Downtown Development Authority Manager. The retitle and reclassification of the Deputy Leisure Services Director, as well as the new position of Economic Development and Downtown Development Authority Manager, were approved at the February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three Merit Commission meeting. Deputy Supervisor Haver, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, the RBA reads that the Canton Leisure Services Department is expanding, and I think that's technically true, but another way to think about this would be to think about particularly the restoration of the economic development position within the township as a restoration. This is a position that was eliminated during the recessions of two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, when the Board had its organizational assessment done in two thousand twenty-one by the Raff tellus organization. This is a position that Raff tellus recommended Canton Township restore to have more focus on economic development within the township, particularly as we become more of a developed community than a developing community. And for good measure, the second assessment that we had done by Raff tellus in two thousand twenty-two, looking at our Communications Department, also recommended that we decouple communications from economic development, which is currently combined in one position in the Supervisor's Office. So we've had two professional recommendations to do this by an organization that specializes in township government, and we have the funding to move forward with that recommendation, and that, that pretty much forms the basis for it.
Questions or comments?
So the economic development, this manager, would they be working for the Community Development Department?
Yes, that's correct. The Community Development Division of the Leisure Services and Community Development Department.
Comments?
I'm trying to remember. We haven't, have we, we vote on, we haven't voted on anything for this yet, or? What's that?
I missed a meeting, so, but I don't think so.
Remember speaking about this? It's just, it's interesting.
Any of the RBAs, I mean, who's spoken about it in many meetings?
I remember we talked to, we talked to staff about it, I think.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. We talked, we didn't talk about this at a study session? Okay.
We talked about the communications assessment.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I mean, if I can, I just, you know, with everything that's going on right now with the Cherry Hill Village project, everything. You know, it makes sense to revisit a position like this. You've got an organization as large as Canton Township, a community that is a quasi-city, right? We're at ninety-eight thousand residents, but we don't have a full-time Economic Development Director. That, that in and of itself is, I think, a huge problem. I think it's really adult of us and mature for us to kind of tackle this on and to say if we're going to be serious about kind of trying to create a high-tech corridor on Michigan Avenue for. Serious about making sure that this pretty large investment of a boulevard on Ford Road is going to be successful. I think it is time for us to create the internal framework to allow that to happen. And I think this is the first step in that process. And the fact that it's a reinstatement. And the fact that it's a reinstatement essentially of where we were prior to says a lot. It says a lot. But.
Anyone else? As you said, Stephen?
Um, yeah, I, I agree. And Deputy Supervisor, thank you for explaining it so clearly, what we're doing here, especially for the community. And, yeah, my, my question had been, but I think Michael alluded to it, that this covers the whole community, including Cherry Hill Village and what's going on there. That's, that's correct.
Yes, this position will cover economic development within the entire township.
Yep, and I, I think it's really important, especially when we're investing in something like Cherry Hill Village, that we have someone who's focused on this full-time. And so I'm excited to see where this goes. So thank you.
Sorry, I have a question for Deputy Supervisor. So what exactly, when we are talking about community development, what are we, the department, like, you know, we broke it into two, or we are dividing the leisure services and we are adding this? So what exactly does community development entail? So, you know, actually, me and the township constituents are educated on it.
Yeah, I mean, our Leisure Services Department has, at the moment, seven major divisions. With the addition of Economic Development, it will be eight. And so with the restructure of Leisure Services, we're essentially dividing a very large department into two major divisions. One that focuses on leisure services, so golf, Canton Sports Center, you know, the summit, recreation at the summit. And another that focuses on community development. So community development is things like programming, parks development, economic development, the programming at the theater, you know, our cable access. And so, you know, all the programs and services that make it in the community that it is. And our Leisure Services Department really does a terrific job of engaging the community and promoting Canton. That's a big reason why we felt like Economic Development made a lot of sense within the Leisure Services Department, because they're already kind of, you know, promoting Canton and engaging with the businesses and with the residents in the community. And now they'll be able to do that at, at an even higher level than they already do, which is saying a lot, because they, they already do it at a very high level.
I kind of understood, but I just wanted a little bit of clarification. Thank you.
Welcome.
Downtown, the DDA will be moved under that also.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understand from the RBA.
Michael?
You know, one interesting thing from a philosophical standpoint is by talking about community development, and if, if Economic Development is kind of like subservient to community development, I think that's actually, from a philosophical standpoint, pretty cool. Like, this notion that we aren't just talking about developing the economic kind of places, the commercial districts in our community, which is something Canton has done remarkably well at. But what we haven't necessarily done remarkably well at is finding ways to integrate that with a walkable community, with green space, with third places, places people can go when they're not at work and they're not at home, but they're also maybe not spending money too. Finding ways to integrate that stuff. That makes sense with Economic Development and DDA. And I think it's a, it's a kind of a clever, I think it's a clever reorganization in that regard that might force us to think more holistically about how the community develops, and not in like weird little silos that say, oh, no, 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 that's Economic Development, and this is Parks and Rec. And like, to kind of reduce both of them to very overly simplified things. I think it's, I'm hoping that what we see is the, the development of a more integrated community, or a further integrated community.
As the community builds out, obviously, the rules will change. But, you know, like, as we know, in 2012, 2013, that, that position was combined with Communications Manager, and we've been more reactive. We haven't been able to be more intentional in things because of, you know, the one person having to do two full-time jobs. So we're expanding on that right now, again, taking it back to, like you said, where we were. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion passes. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. So we'll start online. Is there any public comment? Three-minute public comment online? Public comment? Any public comment? You can raise your hand if you want public comment online. No public comment? How about inside, public comment? Any public comment? Public comment inside, in the audience? Public comment? No public comment? Okay. Any staff comments? Nope. I think coming up, I don't know, John, you're on. I don't know if you wanted to say anything? Okay. How about board comments? Start down with Kate.
I don't really have anything, other than hoping that the people on the two coasts, the west coast and the east coast, are doing okay with the bad weather they're having.
Stephen?
Uh, no, looking forward to the end of winter and warm weather returning. I was lucky enough to take a trip to South America where it was 88 degrees almost every day, and it reminded me how glorious that can be, and so.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you.
Diane?
Well, you know, March is Women's History Month, so just to remind everybody about that and Reading Month as well. And we're welcoming this spring as weather is warming up. And I hope everybody has a safe St. Patrick's Day.
Oh, yes, Greenscarson, Mr. Seeger's forgot his, his.
I missed the memo.
I, I did too.
We had to dress.
I just realized that, I was like, oh, okay. Not like the other.
John, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to echo Diane's comment about being Women's History Month. I was, there are so many events happening in the community. And on Saturday, I was part of, you know, one of Asian-American view, a quite a few Asian-American women organizations came together at Schoolcraft College. And they had, you know, they had a panel about women in professional leadership. And then they had women from, you know, performances. And they also had Senator Stephanie Chang coming and giving a resolution for Women's History Month. So that was a great event to attend. I got to meet some women leaders in different professions in the community. So I'm sure we, we are also having a few events in the township itself, right? We have one on the 31st, so, yeah, and.
Michael?
I have nothing.
No?
You want, I can always talk.
Take a gift when it's presented to you.
So as everyone said, Happy St. Pat's Day, they had the big parade going on, and they had the 5K run. So that was fun to do. Also, GFL pickups tomorrow. So remember, all of you, put your sticks out. We kind of tell you how to do it.
Saturday.
Oh, it's not tomorrow. This is only Tuesday. It's on Saturday. It feels like Friday.
I wish it was Friday.
You were thinking about St. Patrick's Day, it's the day after.
Yes, it's the day after St. Patrick's Day on Saturday. So St. Patrick's Day is Friday, GFL pickup Saturday. Remember how to do it. So no logs. I see some people are putting logs out. So unfortunately, you'll have to call your HOA or somebody to come chop up those logs for you, but just put the branches out. And Jay, do we still have the pickup at DPW, if anyone wants to drop things off?
Yes, that'll be there through the end of next week. Yep.
Sticks, not big tree logs?
No, they can take, any, any logs that they, anything they can get there that would be wood-related, they can take there.
Oh, okay.
No, no construction material, no garbage, but anything that would have fallen out of a tree, a shrub, anything in their yard, they could take there.
What is the difference? At what point does a, does a branch become a log?
Is there a diameter?
I'm not an arborist, I don't know, but.
Well, they have to be able to pick.
Six calipers?
Wasn't there a weight limit for the GFL picking up the sticks?
There was, and I just turned my computer off.
Yes, I think there's a weight limit online.
Take your logs to DPW.
Yes. If you have questions, call us, we will accommodate.
Getting a new chipper, maybe.
Maybe.
And of course, the Holy was this past weekend, so the Festival of Colors, with many blessings and people to have colorful lives. Today's Pi Day, Happy Pi Day for everybody.
Pi Day.
Happy Pi Day.
If we're going there, then tomorrow's the Ides of March.
Tomorrow's the Ides of March, okay.
Oh, that's right.
Beware of tomorrow.
Corporate tax filing deadline as well, so.
And then there's a peace march on Sunday at the Heritage Park. It's held by a group that's going to, it was basically after the MSU shootings. They wanted to, a lot of students are going to, to talk about it and have a little march around Heritage Park.
What time's that at?
That's on Sunday. It's at 11 o'clock. It's held by some students and some local residents.
Yeah. I like that. I mean, I don't like the reason why we have to do it.
All right, great. So do, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Report. Made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. I also forgot, it was Diane Slavin's birthday on Sunday.
Oh, happy birthday.
Happy 39th.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes, we're adjourned.